Let's get this work session started. It is 4:30. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Jacobs, Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Schimpf.
Here.
Mrs. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mrs. Juon.
Yes, here.
Motion to approve the agendas for post.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
We have an agenda, and it is our audited statements presentation by RSM US LLP. Michelle.
I thought I would just do a real short introduction. Kevin Smith, our audit partner, is here with us, and he'll be sharing the actual information. I wanted to just say thank you very much to Kevin and his team, and also to my staff. As you know, we've been terribly shorthanded for the last year, year and a half. So, under a lot of pressure, my staff worked pretty hard to get us here today. So, I want to thank Brent Boland, Emily Graham, and Kim Barr in particular, and as well, the City Clerk's Office and their staff, all get involved, and all the other departments to greater or lesser degrees. I may run a lot of interference for the other departments, so they may not talk to auditors directly, but everything we do financially is touched by the auditors, and I appreciate everyone's help with getting us to the point where we're at today. So, I'm really pleased to introduce Kevin Smith to you from RSM. That is the company name now. You may be more familiar with them as McGlady. They have changed their name relatively recently, but if you would please join me welcoming Kevin.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor.
Depending on your report, we'll hold the applause.
Okay, all right. I'll do my best. Well, good afternoon. Thanks for having me. As Michelle mentioned, I'm here to go through the results of the audit. You've got a lot of information in front of you. What I'm going to go through this afternoon is this presentation. So, it's a smaller document. It says financial presentation on the front. And so, this is derived from the information that's contained in the comprehensive annual financial report. So, that's the larger 180 or so-page document that you have in front of you as well. It's got the green cover to it. So, I'll just flip through this. Feel free to interrupt with questions as I go through the slides, or certainly ask any at the end of the presentation as well. As far as the agenda, I'm going to go through the results of the audit, talk a little bit about the audit process. And then, these slides also have some very high-level financial information that summarizes some of the results from fiscal year 2017. We'll talk about our internal control and compliance report, and also some of the auditor communications that you have as well. That's, all of that is going to be included here in this presentation. So, I'll flip to Slide 3. Just a quick summary of the audit process. The external audit is required by state statutes and federal guidelines to have an external auditor come in each year and review the financial statements and federal grant compliance of the city. The main purpose of the audit is to express an opinion over the financial statements and whether they're in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Also, we look at compliance with federal grant programs. We also look at internal controls. Even though the main purpose of our audit is to not give an opinion over internal controls, we do look at controls as they relate to the financial statements and compliance, and we would report to you any sort of significant deficiencies and material weaknesses. So, flipping to Slide 4, the next few slides just go through a high-level summary of the financial results from fiscal year 2017. The first slide here is, shows the revenue of the city for all of the governmental funds. So, it's going to be all the funds combined excluding the two enterprise funds of the city. So, overall, revenue increased by about $17.6 million, which is about 14%. If you look at the different sources of revenue, most of them stayed pretty consistent year over year. Certainly, tax, the property tax revenue, which is the largest source of revenue of the city, very, very slight changes from last year. The main change you see is in the intergovernmental line right there, which increased from $26 million to about $43 million. And the main driver of that increase was the $23 million from Iowa Department of Transportation for the University Avenue project, for the transfer of jurisdiction project in relation to University Avenue. So, that's the main driver of that increase there. And then, the next slide, Slide 5, shows the expenditures for all of the governmental funds. Expenditures remained relatively consistent year over year, only a very slight increase over 2016, so about a $207,000 increase over last year. Most of the categories here, you can see the expenditures by function. So, you'll see some slight increases and decreases. A lot of it has to do with timing of capital projects and when those capital costs are incurred. You can also see an increase in general government expense, and the main driver of that is increase in insurance costs, both medical and workers' comp insurance costs. And then, the next slide, Slide 6, focuses on the general fund. So, you can see what the fund balance of the general fund was at June 30, 2017. The ending fund balance was $23.7 million. And so, this shows the different categories of the restrictions that you'll see in the financial statements. So, about 36% of that fund balance is restricted by external sources. So, the sources of those, of that fund balance can't be changed by the city. They're either restricted by federal grants. The biggest restriction is over health insurance. About $8 million of that is restricted for health insurance, and about $1.2 million is for tourism promotion. So, you can see a detail, if you wanted to see what made up these restrictions and assignments, Note 20 in the comprehensive annual financial report will show you a further detail of what makes up those categories. But about 40% of that fund balance at the end of the year is considered to be unassigned fund balance. And then, Slide 7 shows a very colorful slide, but it shows a six-year history of revenues and expenditures and fund balance of your general fund. So, you can see that there was a slight decrease in fund balance in the general fund over last year. The biggest difference between, you know, usually your revenues and your expenditures will be relatively balanced or similar, but what this doesn't include is any transfers in. So, what happens in the, with the funds of the city, the tax levy for employee benefits, there's about $5 million of that that gets transferred from that fund into the general fund. So, the revenue you see here in the general fund chart does not include any transfers in. So, that's why you'll see in each of these years expenditures being higher than revenues. And then, Slide 8 will show the general fund's fund balance, so the unrestricted fund balance in days. And so, what this shows you is, you know, if the revenue streams of the city cease to exist and revenue stopped coming in, basically, how long could the city pay for its expenditures with its existing fund balance? And so, what we do is look at that unrestricted fund balance divided by the annual expenses of the general fund to get a percentage, and then you take that by 365 days to get that 105 days. So, the GFOA, which provides some guidance to governmental entities, gives some recommendations on what this, what this number should be. And the range that they generally give is about 90 to 120 days. So, even though you've seen a decrease from last year, it still does fall within that, within that range that the GFOA recommends. And then, Slide 9 will show the results of operations from the city's enterprise funds, so the sewer and sanitation funds. What you want to see with your enterprise funds basically is that they're self-supporting, that the user fees are covering the operating costs. And so, there is positive operating income over the, within the two enterprise funds. Overall, net, net position or fund balance of the enterprise funds increased by about $2.1 million from 2016. Operating revenues were, were up. Expenditures are pretty similar to last year. So, that was a quick financial summary. Again, there's a lot more detail in the comprehensive annual financial report. If you go to the back of that report in the statistical section, there is, there's a lot of historical information. There's about a 10-year history of a lot of the revenues and expenditures of the city. So, that's a great place to go if you do want to see historical context of some of the results from this year. That section starts on page 122 of the CAFER.
Say that one more time. I kind of missed that.
122, that's the start of the statistical section.
Okay.
Yep, and that's, that has a 10-year history of a lot of the financial results of the city.
Just a good time for a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
Okay. So, going back to page 5, and I'm sorry, I was taking notes when you were talking. Is the, the difference in that capital outlay, did you say that was because of timing? Was that that slide you were talking about?
Generally, yes, yes.
Yeah, okay. And then, on page number 7, it seems like the expenditures proportionally are quite a bit more in 2017. Do you know right off the top of your head the reason for that? I'm assuming it's in the, again, the big book, but I was just wondering if you happen to know.
I don't know right off the top of my head. It's, a lot of that is going to be driven off of capital. And then, also, we did look at some of the expenditures, and that general fund went up, or that, some of the, back on Slide 5. So, that's all the governmental funds, but some of that is going to be general fund expenditures being up.
And then, on Slide number 8, and maybe, maybe this isn't a question for you, but seems to me every year for the last several years, we've taken money out of our reserve fund to create what appears to be a lowering of the levy. But then, I'm always told we put that money back in next year because we're judicious with our funds. If that were true, why would we be from 122 days down to about 102, it looks like? Do you know that?
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. I think some of what, when we looked at that fund balance, I think some of what you're talking about is spending down of the, those reserves, which that balance will show up in that restricted fund balance, and this is showing just the unrestricted. So, I think that that restriction, you would see some of that going down each year and being put into the unreserved.
Thank you.
All right, Slide 10. We're going to get into the results now of the compliance audit. So, this, also, there's a section in the, in the CAFER over, over the compliance results. So, this is just going to be a summary of that. So, as far as the internal control of our financial reporting goes, I had mentioned we'd report to you any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses over internal controls, and there are none to report to you. A couple of items you'll see here that are immaterial findings that we look at, that the state wants us to look at each year, and you'll see those disclosed in the report as well. So, the two immaterial instances of noncompliance that are noted here, one, we always have to report deficit fund balances to you. So, there were a few funds that had deficit fund balances, I think the Grants Fund, CDBG, and Capital Improvements Funds. And then, the airport cash deficit item that's noted there, this is to note that the city basically is not in compliance with one of the ordinances that it created many years ago. I think it was 1999, an ordinance was created to say that the airport fund would always have a positive cash balance, and it is not, it's at, I think about $520,000 of a deficit position. So, that's noted in there as a immaterial finding as well. We also look at passenger facility charges and whether those are in compliance with FAA requirements of that program. You'll see that report in here as well, and there were no findings or instances of noncompliance to report to you over the PFC charges. The single audit is basically our federal grant audit. So, we, we look at certain grant programs each year, kind of on a rotational basis. Each of the grants aren't looked at and tested every single year, but usually, your larger grants are tested at least every three years. So, this, this year, Section 8 program was tested in addition to disaster grants, so some of the FEMA money. Both of those programs were tested. We did not have any findings, any compliance findings to report to you over those programs. So, each of them did receive an unmodified or clean opinion, and no instances of noncompliance over those. And then, last slide, page 11, summarizes the, what you see in this letter that you also have in, in the information to you. This just notes some things that are required to be made in writing to you at the end of the audit process. The first bullet here is probably the most important one, just noting that the opinion that we did give on the financial statements that you see in the comprehensive annual financial report is an unmodified or a clean opinion. So, that is the highest level of assurance that you can, can receive over your financial statements with, in connection with an external audit. There were no audit adjustments that we had to propose as a part of the audit process, so all of the financial information that was given to our team to audit, we did not have to make any adjustments to that information. We did not have any disagreements with management, no significant difficulties in performing the audit. You know, we received full, full cooperation from everyone that we worked with at the city, had access to all of the information that we needed to have access to in, in order to perform the audit. So, I want to thank Michelle and her team as well for being prepared for us and, and making it an efficient audit process. So, that's all I was going to go through, but I'd be happy to, to answer any other questions that you have.
I have a couple of the questions for you.
Sure.
Do you, does your firm provide performance audits?
Yes. So, more, when you say performance audits, more of like internal control audits or operational audits, things like that?
There's been a discussion amongst some of us for a few years about taking a look at reorganizing, how the city does what it does, and possibly combining some departments, merging some departments like some other communities have done. Would that be something your firm would be in their wheelhouse?
Yeah, we have a technology management and consulting group at our firm that, that does a lot of those types of reviews, operational reviews, looking at personnel, like you said, department reorganizations and things like that.
Okay. And then, the other question I had, just, and this, again, I'm not sure it's for you, but over the last several years, we seem to have developed a way of moving funds from one department to another, and maybe we've reassigned some of those duties or something like that. Would that be something that you would necessarily catch your eye, or as long as it's, you know, within, I don't want to say legal bounds, but, but sound accounting bounds, that wouldn't raise any questions?
Right, yep. Unless it was, as long as you were, well, our main focus probably is looking at funds and whether they're spent on their intended purpose. And so, if there was moving around of restricted money from one fund to the next, that would, that would raise a concern, and we would look into that more. But for the most part, what you're talking about, just routine shuffling around of departments or moving unrestricted funds, then, then, no, we don't get into that too much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yes.
On that Slide 11, it's unmodified, clean opinion, and you said that's the highest level of assurance that the city can receive from an external audit of any kind. And my question is, what are the other levels? And what would those levels, I mean, how would a city end up with a level like that? So, what are the differences?
So, yeah, so unmodified, even though that doesn't sound like a clean opinion, that, that's what it is. Kind of what falls below that is a modified opinion. So, a modified opinion would be if there were some sort of GAAP exception. So, if we had, if we felt your, your financial statements were in accordance with GAAP except for, let's say, your pension liabilities, let's say you didn't adequately account for your pension liabilities or those are materially misstated, we would have a modification to our opinion to say, to point that out. Say, we've got an unmodified opinion except for this modification, or if you had missed, if you had left out some significant disclosures that are required, that would be a modified opinion. And, and you can even have one level worse than that, which would be some sort of adverse opinion where, where we basically can't even give an opinion on the financial statements, whether it's because we don't have access to enough information to audit, or because they're so materially misstated that, that we can't even give you an opinion as, as to whether or not they're in accordance with GAAP. Thanks. You're welcome.
Yes, a question on the letter that you wrote to us in just identifying some deficiencies, but they don't constitute significant deficiencies. And that's, there's not a page number here. It's probably about halfway through. And you talk about the information technology and the cash collections. Are, either one of the, kind of walk us both through, or through both of those, and to what level of concern are they?
Yeah, so this, again, as you mentioned, these are things that didn't rise to the level of significant or material, but the first with information technology has to do with super-users. You hear that term within IT as somebody basically that has acts, basically full access to that, to the IT system. And usually, somebody at an organization has to have that, that function. And so, that, that in and of itself is not a concern. I think the recommendation is that there's formal procedures in place that if there's, I think there's two individuals now that, that have that super-user access. And whether there's, so what, the recommendation that there's a, there's a policy or a process put in place that if those individuals are making certain changes within the system, it's logged and noted. We didn't note any sort of concerns to the review, but, but when you give somebody that level of access, it, having somebody monitor that helps protect both the city and that individual as well.
Would they monitor each other? I mean, if it's somebody having the access and using the access?
As long as there's two separate super-user accounts and they're not sharing.
Somebody else would have to log them in then?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
And what about the cash?
And then, this one is, is something that really occurs at, at most governmental entities, especially cities that have several off-site cash locations. You know, the, the most significant revenues of the city come in, come into central, central finance and have adequate controls over those. But, but when you've got off-site cat, locations that are collecting cash, there's typically, a lot of times, segregation of duties issues because you've just got few employees handling the money. So, whether it's a pool or a recreational facility, something like that, there's, there's typically areas of improvement there over, over cash collections or kind of a heightened risk, even though they're typically not material to the financials of the city.
And I think I've seen that in a lot of other audits.
Yes.
I know it's not unusual, but considering how many locations there might be that have the cash, do you have any recommendations? Are there some?
You know, they'd have to be look at, kind of on an individual basis, probably a different answer for some of the different locations, but this becomes more of a concern if you do see this rise to a level of significant deficiency or material weakness. So, if you've got, if you've got a lack of controls over, over tax money that's coming in, or grant money, or, or things like that, that's, that's typically where you would have kind of a heightened concern.
Has this been in our audits before?
It has been.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, other questions? All right, want to thank you. Not the greatest weather, but we tried.
[laughing]
Also, to echo Michelle's sentiments for her staff as well, they're doing a bang-up great job for us. And Michelle, thank you as well, and all the other departments. I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Motion to adjourn with the second, all in favor.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Do we have to accept? We don't have to accept that.
I'm going to ask our clerk to do a roll call.
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mrs. Juon.
Ask for a motion for the agenda in minutes, please.
Motion to approve the agenda in the minutes of January 8, 2018, as proposed.
Second.
Discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ask for a motion under new business for the travel requests, one and two, please.
Okay, travel request for Ben Neal, engineering technician, to attend Iowa Department of Transportation recertifications, Cedar Rapids, Iowa, February 7, 2018, amount not to exceed $270, and it's also March 16, 2018. And Garrett Gingrich, paramedic, to attend the EMS refresher course in Hiawatha, Iowa, January 26 through 28, not to exceed $344. Second.
The motion is second. Discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same.
I'm not even close, am I? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I moved that previously when we were talking to the clerks. Mistake.
Don't play with my toys.
Okay, I would entertain a motion for number three, please.
Madam Chairperson, I would make a motion for leisure service request approval to seek bids and sell logs to high bidder and use revenue from this sale for the purchase of replacement trees.
Second.
Discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Ask for a motion for number four, preauthorizations to expend over a, for, over $1,000, please.
Madam Chairperson, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following: preauthorizations expending over $1,000. First is, for the airport, mountain estimated shipping handling, $20,000 for permission to expend an additional $20,000 on phase two for marketing the airport as programmed for the remainder of fiscal year 2018 budget year. Next is engineering, mountain estimated shipping handling, $2,740 for the 2018 Iowa Stormwater Education Partnership Membership dues, half a year. Next is from central garage, mountain estimated shipping handling, $5,864 and 11 cents, for portable Parker hydraulic filter. And next is for leisure services with amount and estimated shipping handling not to exceed $10,000 for emergency repairs to Young Arena's ice system, microprocessor, and glycol pump loop. And next is leisure services as well, mountain estimated shipping handling, $2,100 for purchase of used kettlebells, kickboxing bags, and other miscellaneous equipment from a gym that went out of business in Cedar Falls. Next is the sewer department, mount an estimated shipping handling of $4,332.80 plus $120 shipping handling for replacement of the hatch sampler, AS950 frig and cable assembly for Easton effluent sampling. Next is the sewer department as well for mountain estimated shipping handling, $15,695.10 for pump repair parts, labor and trip charge for number four, Easton Raw wastewater pump. Next is sewer department as well, mountain estimated shipping handling, $4,298 for software license and support plan renewals for granite users. Next is from the street department, mountain estimated shipping handling, $10,053 for 100 motor grader blades for snow removal. Next is traffic operations, mountain estimated shipping handling of $1,200 to replace a light pole base and sidewalk on the northeast corner of Park Avenue and Commercial Street. And finally, from Public Works is mountain estimated shipping handling of $4,938 to replace 42 various fire extinguishers throughout the Public Works building.
Second.
And congratulations to Councilman Morrissey for getting through that entire list. Well done.
Think nothing of it.
Is there any other discussion?
Madam Chair, would now be an appropriate time for a noncommittee member to ask a question, or would I be considered out of order?
About the budget? I'm in the finance.
Yes.
Is that acceptable?
It's acceptable.
Okay. My, my question is on number eight, on leisure services. The last time I was down at the The last time I was down at the Sportsplex, which is not near as much as I should be, I believe I saw that we had a lot of kettlebells, we had a lot of those bags and things. I mean, is there a reason why we're kind of almost, in a sense, bailing this private entity out?
Paul Hudding, leisure services director. Basically, it's due to, boy, there's a lot of reverberation, due to increased membership and increased usage. So those items have been heavily used and, and the membership is just above what we projected. So it's much less expensive than buying new. So we just thought this would be a good opportunity to actually save some money on something we're going to have to purchase anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? If not, we have a motion in second to accept the preauthorizations over $1,000 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Motion, I will make a motion for the budget line items to be amended. Number five, to approve the budget, project budget amendment for the organized crime drug enforcement project in the amount of $7,500 funded by the FBI as submitted by the police department. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Number six, make a motion to approve the project budget for the Marx Park resurfacing project funded with $54,246 in donations and $7,000 city bond funds as submitted by, submitted by leisure services.
Second.
Is there a second? Okay, discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great. Under bills payment, as contained in the accounts payable, report dated January 16, 2018, in the amount of $743,178.47. I move that would be received, placed on file, approved, and forwarded to the full council. Is there a second? Second? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Entertain a motion for adjournment.
Madam Chairperson, I move for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Everyone is so chipper today, and we appreciate that, but I would like the staff to also welcome them as well to our city council meeting this evening. Madam Clerk, could you please read the row?
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Schimpf?
Here.
Mrs. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mrs. Juwan?
Here.
All right, thank you. I will ask that you join me in a moment of silence, and directly after that, we're going to have the honor of being led by, in the pledge tonight, by Ward Five Council member, Mr. Schimpf.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. You may be seated if you can.
I make a motion that the agenda as proposed and the minutes of January 8, 2018, be accepted and up first.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Questions, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an agenda. This is the time for oral presentations. It's your opportunity to let us know what's on your mind and on your heart. So if you would please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and let us know, and these are non-agenda related items. This guy will move out your way. We're going to have to talk to him about getting set up before the meeting starts, or, or cutting him off. Trying to get, there are, there's always a recorder.
You look good on camera, Mark.
All right.
Sorry, I've never done this before. My name is Matt Baumann. I'm the manager over at Tuffy's on Ainsborough.
Can you give?
It's been brought to my attention.
Address for the record.
Oh, 1325 Ainsborough.
Thank you.
It's been brought to my attention, we're looking at widening Ainsborough. I'm hearing conflicting how far into the parking lots we're cutting. One of my big issues, and I took this photo yesterday with my cell phone, is when I got a tow truck dropping off currently, he's within two feet of my building to even put a car in my parking lot. This is the smallest of the two trucks Rasmussen has. Their other trucks actually six feet longer. I start cutting too much in my parking lot, I have no parking, I am literally forced to move the business or close it.
Right.
By losing that much parking. Ever since, in my opinion, ever since we put in the turn lanes up there between, up by the subway, that's when all the congestion started, because it seems like we're going opposite directions one at a time. You know, maybe go back to the old timing, look into possibly the timing of those lights to try to alleviate some of that congestion up there.
All right, thank you so much. Very excellent points.
I do have some photos here, if you guys would like them.
We will take those and get those to Sandy and to Planning. And Sandy, you want to tell us exactly what we're doing right now, and what type of communication we will have moving forward? And thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sandy Greco, interim Public Works Director. We're working with planning, and we will have a consultant come in, do the design. There'll be different options. Then we'll be working with the property owners to know exactly what we're going to do. We'll be bringing it back to council with a work session to let you decide, so.
So right, right now, we're just talking about a study, we're not?
Yes, we don't have the designer or anything yet.
Okay, okay. And we'll communicate with folks in the area as well, right?
Yes.
All right, did you have anything to add? You're sitting on the?
Can I get your phone number and name or his favor or something? That'd be helpful.
Absolutely.
I got some business cards if you want some.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Sandy, I thought when we talked about this last week?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
I thought, I thought we had a fairly defined plan, because we talked about how much land are we going to take? So am I hearing now we don't have that defined plan, or?
No, we do, but the design isn't done yet. So there'll be different options, and I know Noel is working on this also, so we'll come back to you before anything's done. You have to approve it.
So are we rock solid, we're not going to be cutting into that parking lot, or not necessarily?
I don't think we know yet for sure. We know the, well, I don't know about Tuffy's, but we know the car dealer, the dealership there on the corner.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. I mean, we had some preliminary drawings that we just kind of put together to, to show people what a third, what a, what an additional lane out there might look like, but as I actually get into the design work, we'll look at different alternatives based on feedback from, from property owners and everything in that area as well.
So before we get too far down the road and potentially put a business out of business, we'll have good visibility of that. Because last week, I'm pretty sure we were told five feet out of the car lot, parking lot, which wouldn't affect him, and nobody else would be impacted. I'm pretty sure that's what I heard.
And some of the preliminary drawings are showing feet of, of how you're coming over to that eastern portion. And again, part of the study process is to look at different alternatives to speak to adjoining property owners and all that, about impacts and things of that nature. So we're, we're starting that process now. We'll gain some information from them. We'll gain some information from the consultant as they move ahead in the study process to look at what options are out there.
And, and if the study comes back and it states that this gentleman's business will not be able to have trucks go in and out, or whichever businesses, nothing can be done without council saying yes or no for that project.
Yes, they have to approve it.
And number two, the goal of this project is not to put people out of business. So that's something that you'll absolutely be paying attention to moving forward. So council has the final say.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I could just ask a clarifying point. So Sandy, have, will the study also include just considering re-timing the lights? A lot of folks have talked about the lights in there. You basically leapfrog through every light, which creates a lot of extra backup and congestion. So would that, have you considered that already, or have we looked at that already, to time those lights so they work as they should in other areas of the city?
Downing at Ainsborough was changed to the way it is now because of all the accidents at that intersection, and that was a, a grant approved by the DOT. That was a traffic safety grant, because of the number of accidents at that intersection. That's why that was changed temporarily at this time, knowing that we were going after a grant to improve the whole roadway.
All right, because the concern really is, is if you look at how much land you're probably going to have to take with the 35-foot setoff, both Tuffy's and the Safelite building would probably be rendered unusable, or there's a chance that we would have to then buy those buildings as part of the city. So that's what we do. Do not want to do that if, you know, I don't think that would make sense for us. I would rather we look at just re-timing the lights. Maybe there's a better way to do it, maybe we haven't really looked at it or not, but it seems like we need to maybe look at that as well.
And we can do that.
Yep, and then once we get to that point, we'll have a work session, because this was not on the agenda, but we want to make sure we answer just a couple questions. But we'll have a work session. Council will be absolutely included in that conversation, and the input that they've given will be considered as well for options.
Excuse me, it'll have the options and everything from the consulting engineer on design.
All right.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I just, I would like her to bring to that work session whether or not the accident rate has gone down since we re-timed it.
And it has, but we can bring that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, all right.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I just wanted to, just mention that maybe this would be a time to reinvigorate a roundabout discussion at the corner of Ainsborough and University Avenue.
Put several businesses out of business. It's a great idea.
I think it'd be a very good discussion.
But, but, um.
Live like.
I mean, it's, all right, so let's, let's conclude on this portion of this conversation. It's not on the agenda. We got the gentleman, some preliminary questions answered. Staff will be in contact with you. We have a study coming up, and we'll have future discussion about what's going to take place with all of our comments included. So let's move on from this particular area. Yes, sir?
David Dryer, 3145 West 4th Street. This is on the same subject. We have put in a request for a grant, and I assume that was with a specific detail on what we were going to do there. So now we're talking about further discussion, et cetera, so are we going to lose that grant?
Done, we're done on this part, portion of it, so. All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the council, non-agenda related items?
Hold on one second. Hi, my name is Robert Begg. I live at 1618 Logan Avenue, and I'm just here trying to help out people who have bulky cars to start on cold mornings. There is a very simple, it's not even a trick, it's just a procedure. I've known about it for 45 years, I've used it for 45 years. It worked this morning even. What you do when you get in your car, turn your lights on for 30 seconds, turn them off, start the car. What that light does, what running the lights do is warm up the battery and the cables. So therefore, when you call for the cranking amps, they have a nice warm path to the starter. And like I say, it's worked like a charm for 45 years.
All right, thank you. That's some good information. I thought you were finna sell your services. I thought you were about to say that you had a business and you were cranking up cars. I, I had to let it go, but, you know, thank you so much for, thank you so much for that information to come in here. You don't have to go. You can hang out a little while.
My wife's birthday.
You have to go.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
John Chervin, I hate to keep beating this horse, but some of this information that we're getting tonight isn't right on program. We paid, what, $6,000, $7,000 for a study to run that stoplight, and that was after that had been re-timed. My question last week was, why don't we put it back like it was and then maybe do a study by standing there watching it? And it was stated that the way that stoplights are set now is not good, we need to change it. That's where they come up with this, let's get that lane out of there. And you've got one intersection that stops from one direction, and then the light changes and it stops the same street the other direction, and we have turn arrows there. So I am not sure why we can't have green on both sides, or red on both sides and leave it like it was, because the accidents don't make any difference whether the, the light, you're still stopping half the street. They're still going to have accidents on the other side if that's the way it is. I, I don't understand, you know, I, common sense dictates that if you're driving down the road and the guy stops in front of you and you don't stop, you're going to hit him. And whether the lights, you know, so what's the difference if the light's green on the other side? We're not gaining anything. I drove down Ainsborough the other night, thinking, and the first thing I seen, I seen the fire station closed. And I says, you know, with that $100,000,000 plus whatever it's going to cost us to buy that building, we could probably keep that place open. That would help us, wouldn't it? One or two more firemen. It's, we, we always got a place to spend the money, but not in the right place. You know, if we need firemen, let's put that in there, let's make that the number one priority, not some street that, that it's not a problem anyway. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to a non-agenda related item?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to just speak, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
On behalf, I think, of Councilman Schimpf and Councilwoman Klein, I want to thank all of the department heads. They have been amazing to help us through the city's first official orientation session for newly elected council members. And every, we've met with every single department head, and I can't tell you how talented and forthright and informative every single one of you have been, and I thank you for that. I especially also want to thank our mayor for coming up with the idea, because again, this is the first time we've had this kind of orientation, and for our wonderful city clerk who's organized all of this since the first part of December. So we have learned a lot about the city, and, and I commend everyone who was part of it, but also thank you for authorizing this. It's been very helpful. Plus, I've gotten to know my peers much better, so thank you for that.
And what, what people don't know, yes, department heads put time in this, and Kelly and I, but the three council members have put a lot of time in it, because you're talking about, how long? Three hours, four hours?
Some have been all day.
Yeah, one day was like 10 hours.
They tried to kill me.
So I want to thank you for making yourselves available.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up a couple things. I got a person who contacted me that he wishes that, that private businesses would follow his suggestion, and it emanated from a fact that he had a problem at a, at a local business, and he looked all over for a phone number for that business on the business property and couldn't find none. And he, he ended up getting it resolved just by happen chance, but he noticed that there, and there might be a problem with people who do have an issue with a business but don't know how to reach it because they, there's no phone number in the phone book or anything like that. So his suggestion was to the private businesses and any public business to please post your phone number, a way to reach you in a conspicuous place. The other thing that I wanted to mention was that there is a sort of like grocery store and, it's sort of a cool sounding name, Frugal Finds, which has started up, it's open, and it's 316 West 5th Street, and in its, in the alley between West 4th, West 5th, right there, the parking lot next to the Old Railroad Depot there, so for everybody. And it, it is, quite frankly, I was in there today, it's got groceries of all different kinds.
It's got groceries of all different kinds, and not that I'm promoting or anything. I just want people to know that we've got something down on West Fifth Street there that people can make use of now. And the other thing is something that is concerning me, or it concerns me greatly. And that is, I've run into a situation in Ward Three where I've got residents who are being impacted by a business, or somewhat of a business, that wants to become something that requires something that it never will have. And it's out of compliance with city ordinance in two different areas. And I, to my chagrin, learned that residential properties within a setback aren't by ordinance notified of any action that is being taken that does impact their properties. And I believe that that's wrong. And I believe that the city should at very least set up a policy that anybody within a setback footage be notified of any action that would be taken that would impact them and their property.
All right, thank you. Just really quickly, I want to add from yesterday, the King Day of Service. A great, great time at the Waterloo Center for the Arts. Cherie, Kent, and other folks have put together a tremendous program, working with youth in our community as well. So I wanted to give a shout-out for that. Also had an opportunity to visit Columbus High School and work with about 60 to 70 different students there during service projects. So it was a, it was a great day in Waterloo. It was a great commemoration. So I want to give a shout-out to the students and the folks that organized programming yesterday to honor the life and legacy of Dr. King.
I'd like to add to that, that I went to the Martin Luther King banquet on Sunday night, and that was equally joyous, thought-provoking, and I was very proud to be part of that entire event. With that said, we're gonna close, accept, close oral comments, that they be received and placed on file.
Second.
Make that motion.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The presentations are now closed.
Okay, I would like with the consent agenda to receive, place on file, and approve the consent agenda with the addition of A1 of the amount of the summary report for the week being $743,178.47.
Second. All right, that motion has been made with the second. Are there any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
That's on the consent agenda, correct?
Okay, yep.
I just wanted to make a note on number four here, the recommendation of Community Development Director for the appointment of Felicia Smith-Nalls. As most of you know, I've been the president of one of the larger neighborhood associations in Waterloo for a number of years now, three or four, and I've had the pleasure of working with both the previous coordinator and the current interim Neighborhood Service Coordinator, who is Felicia. And I can't express what an excellent job she has done since taking that position. And I know she comes from a very nice family here in Waterloo that is very involved. I believe her mother's in the Waterloo school system. And, you know, just, I can't express my overwhelming support for that appointment for her.
All right, thank you.
Ditto.
Other questions about the consent agenda? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Shimp?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
All right, that item carried. So first off, we'd like to say congratulations to you, Mrs. Nalls, as well, on your appointment. All right, and all the great works that need to be done. I see some representatives from our neighborhood associations, as well as Mr. Shimp as well. So I think folks are excited and looking for big things. So get ready, get used to the 50 and 60 hours a week. And also, we have a board appointment for our Human Rights Commission reappointment. Mrs. Kia Levy, who works in diversity programming at the University of Northern Iowa, but from Waterloo as well. So we want to thank you for your time and commitment and your service as well. So thank you. All right, so that is all. It is time to begin our resolutions. And could someone take two, three, and four?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Item number two is a motion to approve change order number three for a net deduction or reduction of $47,734.08 for the fiscal year 2017 CIP pipelining phase 111A. Contract number 919, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Item number three is adopting a resolution approving completion of project and recommendation of acceptance of work for work performed by Municipal Pipe Tool Company of Hudson, Iowa.
Let's just do two and three.
Okay.
All right.
In the amount of $1,545,675.43 for the fiscal year 2017 CIP pipelining phase 111A, contract number 919, and receiving filed two-year maintenance bond.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Counsel questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Shimp?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, someone take four and five, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Amos?
Number four, I'd like to make a motion approving a change order, change order number two for a net increase of $91,423 for the fiscal year 2017 Fourth Street Bridge Canopy Repairs, contract number 910, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number five is a resolution approving completion of project and recommendation of acceptance of work for work performed by Minterm Inc. of Brooklyn, Iowa in the amount of $1,574,000, $574,136 for the fiscal year 2017 Fourth Street Bridge Canopy Repairs, contract number 910, and receiving filed two-year maintenance bond.
Second.
All right, that motion's been made with the second. But I would like, Eric, if you want to give us some background on this particular, on number four especially, that would be great.
Number four isn't so much a change orders. It really is a final quantity summary for this project. A little history, we originally bid this project to totally replace the concrete walls on the canopy, and that bid came in at just under $2.6 million. So we were asked by the council to go back to the drawing board and try to figure out how we could do this and stay closer to our $1.5 million budget. So we worked with a consultant on a repair option. Most of the other items were the same, but it was repair of the concrete walls. And they did do some cores to see if that would help delineate the amount of repairs, which it did help some, but there still was more concrete repair than we could anticipate. When you're doing concrete repair, you need to chip the deteriorated concrete back to solid concrete in order to get a good repair. So the quantities on the concrete repair account for most of the increase to this project, and there were some adjustments in those. There was a minor adjustment. There was some less structural steel that was required, and there was a little bit more deck patching on the actual walkway. But most of the change comes from just additional concrete repair to the walls underneath the canopy.
So we, there was no change in the scope of work on this? This was all part of...
No, this is actually why we bid various quantities. We try to bid as many different quantities in a job as we can so that we actually have unit prices for that work. And then, if you have adjustments through the contract, then the contractor is only being paid for the actual work that they do. And that's the fairest way for both the contractor and the city.
And the bids were originally two point, close to 2.6. This one came in about 1.5 roughly, right?
Yes, and that also included, through a council decision, to bid an alternate to replace the windows. That added about another $93,000 to actually replace the windows, and so we did do that. So we were unfortunately a little bit over our $1.5 million budget, but I think getting all of this done and also being able to replace the windows, it came out pretty well. I mean, I was a little bit surprised that it wasn't a little bit higher, but with all of the adjustments that we had, we were able to keep it just a little bit over our budget.
And one of the, one of the questions that I've been receiving publicly just about the entire project, and, you know, I don't know where things fall at, but what are we going to do in the future to make sure that we don't get to the point? You know, I know we have been working with a staff member that's just assigned to city facilities, but I don't necessarily know if the bridge is part of that audit that we're doing. But what are, what can be done? What are we going to do to make sure that we don't have 100 panels that are bad? What are we going to do to maintain and keep it where it needs to be?
Well, I think actually the panels, the glass panels, well, they're really plastic. The panels that were in there really just faded. We didn't have too much trouble with the upper ones being vandalized or broken or anything like that. They pretty much just faded and became very clouded. So the new panels that are in there, it was a decision by Main Street to use the panels that had a little bit of an opaqueness to them already. And over time, they will again fade. The consultant did a lot of work trying to figure out if there was some other material out there that could be used that would maybe fade less or become more opaque over time. There really isn't. There hasn't been that much improvement in those type of products since the original canopy. We will need to be sure that the maintenance departments, you know, power-wash that structure periodically. And we did actually, on the concrete walls, we coated those with a coating that we hope will help reduce the deterioration and protect that more over time from the salt and things that get sprayed off the roads from snow removal and that sort of thing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
How much life is left in that bridge?
Well, the whole bridge structure itself has a lot of life left in it. It was, I believe, built in the '70s, and of course, you generally get about 75 years or so out of a bridge. So we've got a lot of time left. That's actually one of our newer bridges compared to some of the others.
Thank you.
It's Park Avenue that we'll have to talk about in the future. Yep, yes, sir.
Jim Chapman, 224 Birch, that $91,000. Who was the contractor? And didn't he look at this job thoroughly before they started it? And now we come back with a change order on concrete? You know, I mean, when someone comes in and looks at a job before they bid it, they ought to look at it thoroughly. And someone should have caught this to begin with, I think, so... Well, I mean, where do we go next? What they gonna find next, you know? We gonna have another change order because something else is wrong over there? You know, it just seems like it goes on and on and on.
Yeah, and it's an imperfect science, but they need to be as close as they can possibly be. And we've been fortunate. We've had some, what do you call it, reductions, as well as some of these projects. But Eric, he asked about who is the contractor and...
Well, the contractor was Minterm out of Brooklyn, Iowa. And actually, we felt they were a very good contractor. They worked very closely with us. And with all the downtown events, we had a number of events included in the contract that they had to work around, but there were a number of other events that came up that they were gracious enough to work around and allow the bridge to be opened during those events. They also worked with the youth art team to put a very nice project into that structure. So we think they did a great job. They're very good to work with. They look at it as closely as they can, but they're bidding on the quantities that are actually put together for the bid. And the consultant did their best job to try to anticipate what the repairs would be. Unfortunately, you just can't see inside those concrete walls, so you can't see all the deteriorated concrete that's there. And once you kind of get started, you have to chip back to solid concrete to make a good repair.
Well, I guess my opinion, they should have done a better job of looking at it in the first place. That's my opinion only. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
May I ask a question? Was there a contingency on this?
No, we didn't really have a contingency built into this. Because we had the...
A lot of times, you'll put the contingency in there for things you don't anticipate. And if it wasn't put in here, you had no way of addressing those unexpected changes.
Well, again, that's why we kind of have bid items in unit prices, so that if things go up or down, we can adjust accordingly and only pay for what actually gets done.
And my understanding is that that change, that increase of $91,000, is included in the total amount of, in number five, of $1,574, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So if the original budget or proposal was 1.5, we really didn't go over it by the $91,000. We went over it by 74. I'm not minimizing that it's still an overage, but in some respects, they came in under where our original thought was.
That's correct, because there were some reductions in other quantities that helped bring the price down.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
David Dryer, 3145 West Fourth Street. Were the consulting fees, or are the consulting fees in the 1.574?
No, that's separate from that.
How much was that?
I don't have a number here. Before me, Doug's here. I don't know if he can remember a number or not. Been working on this project for quite a few years, so I don't have a total we can get that.
And if not, can that be given?
I don't have that number. I can certainly get it to you, though. I just don't have that number memorized.
Information in 24 hours. And then, Mr. Dryer should get that question answered, too. So who should he call tomorrow?
I'll make, well, I'll double-check with Doug on the numbers in the morning, and he can give me a call.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey?
So the project's complete, Eric?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and the youth art team, they're going to continue their project for the artwork inside on the panels? Is my understanding?
It's my understanding that they'd like to do a similar project again this coming spring with a different, well, it'd be the youth art team. I assume some of the students graduate and some move on, but they'd like to do a very similar-type project again this spring.
For those bump outs?
Yes.
Okay, and then the final thing, when it says receiving filed two-year maintenance bond, what exactly does that mean, Eric?
That's a bond that the contractor provides for their workmanship and materials. Should anything happen within that two-year period, well, it'd be two years from tonight if it's approved by council, we can go back to the contractor and have them make the repairs, or if they won't make them, we can go to their bonding company and get it done. So that's required by state code on all of our projects, pretty much that we do, that you have a two-year maintenance bond for workmanship and materials.
Okay, and Mr. Mayor, one final question. And that is, is there, in the CIP or CIP plans and budget, is there included a certain amount of money that's set aside every year for just ongoing maintenance of the bridge?
No, I don't think that'd really be a CIP cost. That'd be more of a budget cost.
Are you, are you going to do that then?
I don't think we can put ongoing maintenance in a CIP. But we can, so, but we can take a look to see structurally how things are done. Right now, we got two years with this present company, but we're also working with Mark to put together this overall plan for city buildings. When you take a look at the place we're sitting in, you know, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. And do you do a yearly or bi-yearly some type of bridge inspection from your area?
Yes, actually, we're required by the federal government to do biennial bridge inspections, and AECom has typically done that for us, and the report should be here shortly. We had some preliminary information come in, but we're waiting for the final report, so...
Will that be done by the time with CIP, or is that going to be done a little bit later?
We, we, well, I can let Doug speak, too. But we did get some preliminary numbers that we looked at for CIP and didn't request any actual funding for bridge repairs out of CIP this coming year. We were hoping to maybe use some of the extra road use tax money that's come in, because of course, that's what that was really for, was to work on bridges and streets and things. And so we're gonna try to tailor that to whatever money can be available from that. And so we're going to try to tailor that to whatever money can be available from that fund for the coming year.
I'm hearing a continuous theme in every conversation when it comes to department head, staff, some council, the community. It's about maintaining what we have and making sure that it stays up to par, so.
Mr. Mayor?
I think Mr. Jacobs had a point, a question.
I'm Mr. Mayor. So the original contract on this was 1.48 million and change. And we had, I'm just wanting to make sure I understand the process. Maybe we can do it better going forward, but... So we have no contingency, so we do a project. We don't know how thick the cement walls are, so we don't know. So then we just assume that we're just gonna go ahead and build the city for the difference of 91,000, which may or may not be avoidable. And then also, the change order says that this has already been paid out. Is that the case or not?
That's correct, because this summary comes in at the very end of the project when we do the acceptance. So we pay the contractor with monthly pay estimates.
So you pay the contractor before the council even approves it?
Well, this, this doesn't really require council approval, as far as I know.
Then why are we vote, why are we voting on it tonight?
Well, they've been presented for many years this way to the council at their request.
I simply don't agree with that.
So tell, 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 so we can, we can work on it or...
Well, I think we should going forward, I think if we're gonna do a project, if we don't have a contingency of a some, certain percentage, like 10% or something, then we're saying this is what it's gonna cost the taxpayers, and so we're gonna vote for that. Anything more is not authorized. But we've already, according to the change order I read, and I might not be reading it right, but it's already been paid out. So then why are we even bringing it up tonight, I guess, is my question.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, that's not, is that paid out already?
There's still retainage to pay after the 30-day period that starts with the acceptance of the project, but...
So we're, we're approving to pay it. So when we call this a change order, we haven't changed the scope of the work. We've just changed the amount based upon whatever was found in the process. But I think a, a question is, you know, at, at what point within the change and the cost, does it, one, come back to council? And then also, two, do we say, no, we stuck here? Right now, with no contingency, you know, staff really didn't have any leverage to say, you know, do 10% more, do 5%? That wasn't given. But that's why I'm just wondering about if there's something that policy or whatever that we can bring forth so that, you know, this group is engaged a little bit more or a certain amount, or the department head has the latitude to do this where it's not a shock and awe, like coming with 91,000 difference. So I'm just trying to figure out from Councilman Jacobs and the questions, how we could, what, what type of policy or what we can do to move forward. So this hasn't been paid. If you have any, any, any thoughts about that, but this hasn't been paid yet, right?
There's still retainage to pay. That's what remains.
That's the percentage, though, right?
Which is, which is 5% of the construction cost.
Okay, Michelle.
Michelle Weedner, Chief Financial Officer. I think you could consider a couple of different things. One thing, I think we could adopt a policy that allows department heads to approve quantity adjustments, which means they have a quoted bid price up to a certain percentage of the job or maybe $100,000, just picking a round number out of the air. Or you could put contingency allowances in. Personally, I probably prefer the quantity adjustment route. We have a similar issue with change orders for other construction type things. I, I have some ideas about, but I'd like to get back to you about that. But I definitely think it would make sense to adopt a policy that would authorize your department heads to do that up to some level. I think we do need council's authorization, you know, of some limit. But we, we don't want to have a contract for a million dollars and have quantity adjustments for a million. I don't doubt anyone would think that was reasonable. But our, our quantity adjustments tend to be, as a percentage of the project, they're really very small. It's, you know, yes, I realize it's $91,000, but it's on a 1.5 million dollar project. We didn't double the project cost or, or anything like that. So I, I think there are ways we could handle that administratively.
I know several years ago, and I'll come to you, when I, when I first started on council, you know, I used to always wonder about some of these projects where they start out at X amount, and then they end up at a certain amount. And then wondering if a person had also bid on that same project and had a higher amount but didn't get the bid. I don't, for this situation, I don't, this wasn't the case in this situation, was it? There wasn't anybody that was even close. Was it, was this the only bidder? Or did anyone have a bid within 91,000 on this project or 74,000?
Eric Thorson, there were, I believe, three bidders. And I don't remember the exact numbers. We have a bid tab for that. But there were, they were all within about, well, this one was just, just under 1.5. And I think there was another one that was a little over 1.5, and another may have been 1.6 or something. But it wouldn't have made any difference who the contractor was. We still would have had these extra quantities because we couldn't tell exactly how much repair could be made by what evidence we have out there, so.
Based on quantity?
It's, it's based on the quantity, and that's why we bid as many bid items as we possibly can. We break things down into bid items and have unit prices for each of those bid items so that we only end up paying for exactly what the contractor does.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
I think we had Mrs. Juon, and then we'll come to you, Mrs. Klein, and then we'll go to the gentleman at the podium.
I got one of that, too.
I have a, a couple of things.
And after the podium, we'll come here.
Couple comments. Certainly, I appreciate the situation that you were put in. But I personally agree with Councilman Jacobs that if it exceeds the amount that the council has approved, it's gotta come back to the council for approval, unless we build in, again, a contingency or, or whatever. But my other thought is on the overall maintenance, not only of the bridge, but other... A lot of my colleagues in the private sector say, why don't you have a depreciation fund? My, so that you can pay for future maintenance out of that depreciation fund. I don't believe cities can have a depreciation fund. And I don't know if you're prepared to answer that, but that's my belief, that we can't set money aside for those kind of future maintenance expenses. Is that correct?
Michelle Weedner, Chief Financial Officer, again. I'm going to say no on the surface. There are maybe some specific circumstances where you could use general fund money. But that is typically the money we use to pay employees with. So you would be making some very conscious decisions that would be very unusual in city budgeting in the state of Iowa.
Putting aside, what I hear people say they wish the city did is put aside money for future maintenance that would carry over from one fiscal year to another. I don't believe you can do that. Comment, I'm not sure on that, Michelle. I know that, that you would check that, and if it was possible, you would have already done it. But the other comment I want to make is regardless of all this, the bridge looks wonderful. And I was glad to hear that the artwork turned out so well. I was a little concerned about that. And so if there're gonna continue to be more artwork, I don't know, Kent, did you oversee that artwork? Or whoever did? If there's going to be more of it, please make sure that it kind of is of the same quality and, and the same look so they don't wind up getting all garbled up there.
Did you want to speak to that? Then we'll go to Mrs. Klein, and we'll go to Mr. Dillivu, and then we'll go...
Kent Schenkel, Cultural and Arts Director. That project was coordinated by the youth art team, and they have a very great track record. They don't just give kids art materials and say, go to work. They work very hard with them so that they understand the, the gravity of the project, the connection to the community and so forth. And they put a lot of research and thought into every project that they do. And I think it's...
Looks great. Good job.
...shown in, in all their past projects.
I think Danny, Danny Laudek helped with that as well.
Wonderful.
Mrs. Klein.
Okay, you're right. There was some shock looking at this, especially for me. I go through line by line. And when I came to the real egregious amount where we, the unit price was $185 for, for the concrete repair per square foot, and our contract quantity was estimated to be 70, and then the actual quantity was $524.90. I was taken aback. It's the people's money. And then, then today, I, I emailed Mr. Thorson, and he kindly answered me and took care of most of my questions. It is the people's money, but the people also have to understand that these are technical things. And it is only about, what, a 6% overage, somewhere in that neighborhood? So I, I rocked and I rolled today on this.
Okay.
And I rolled right into the canopy.
All right, Mr. Dillivu.
Forrest Dillivu, 1725 Huntington Road. I would like to speak to the overall of this project. Number one, this was built with TIF dollars. And I felt when it needed repaired, it should have been repaired with TIF dollars. You know, John mentioned the firefighters that we don't have, that we, we have determined that we do need. If this hadn't come out of the general fund, it would have went quite a ways to do things like that. And the increase, maybe the increase could be paid out of TIF. We've got to start tapping some of this other money. You know, we can't just keep burdening the, the residential taxpayers with everything we do. I, I feel that there's a need right now to start tapping some of those TIF dollars, at least to support the projects that they put in. This was just, to me, like robbing from the residential taxpayers for the downtown businesses, you know? Yes, it needed fixed, and the same way with the maintenance on it. Don't burden the citizens with that. Let's, let's redo the maintenance out of TIF. You know, it was built for the downtown businesses primarily. We can all use it, I know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? I've received a lot of opposition in, in regards to this, this resolution here. So I guess really what my question is, is what happens if we decide to not pay that 91,000 and some change? I don't know if that's a question for Mr. Zellifer, Eric, or Ms. Weedner.
What will happen if we don't pay for...
Well, I don't have my crystal ball. Dave Zellifer, City Attorney, but we're probably gonna get sued. And we'll probably lose.
And we received, I think it was a 700 or 750,000 grant from gaming for the project as well.
So, so there, there was nothing in the contract stating that they would have to come back before us if they went over this cost? Nothing at all. Obviously, I wasn't on the council when this was initially approved. So we didn't have access to all of these, all this information.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Mary Potter, Church Row President, on 416 West Fourth Street. Sometimes I get very disgusted with the way I think that people on the council and people that are in capacities of being able to help Waterloo think. I don't think people come to Waterloo because they think their taxes are gonna be lower. I think people come to Waterloo because they have a history of having interesting things. We have the Rout Museum, we have the bridge. These are things that I think will promote Waterloo much more than always worrying how we're going to have the taxpayers do this or that. I think there needs to be some thinking here, what do we want Waterloo to do? We look at Cedar Falls, and we can see a very big difference between the way Cedar Falls looks, the way it acts, and the way Waterloo looks and acts. And you can almost tell when one leaves and the other one begins. Because I think we do not have forward enough thinking to say, what can we do to make Waterloo more acceptable, more attractive to people that will want to move here? We build tons and tons of places for people to rent, but there are no renters. Because nobody wants to come to Waterloo because we're so busy griping about every little thing that they think the taxpayer's gonna have to pay for. Maybe the taxpayer starts to be able to say, what will this benefit me? Will more people coming to town increase businesses? Will it fail some of this rental property? I, I think we think of this all backwards. I think sometimes we get elected with the idea of, well, we're gonna cut taxes. Well, what's that gonna do? It's going to ruin this city. You don't go forward. You don't put four amateurs in the big Chicago Metrodome and then say, we're gonna bring people. You put one Michael Jordan in there, and that brings the people. And I think we need to start more in terms of thinking, how are we going to make Waterloo better so that more people want to come, rather than what are we gonna save? How can we afford to do this? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Juon, then I want to call a question.
I've got a question, too.
Okay, Mr. Schmidt, after.
Oh, yield.
Okay. I, I'd just like to know, and I don't know if this is for Eric or Michelle, but so what, can anybody tell me, what is the total dollar amount of this project, including all fees, design, research, all that stuff? Are we approaching $2 million? Can anybody tell me?
You got some numbers?
Eric Thorson, that's the number that I need to get from Doug on the total engineering costs that we have in this, which I'll have tomorrow, but I don't think we're approaching $2 million.
So, so to Mr. Schmidt's question, the actual physical project of this is on here? And then the consulting will have that number within 24 hours for council and when Mr. Dryer calls?
Yes.
All right. Mrs. Juon.
I guess my question was just, if we authorize a certain amount for a project, what is it that made Mr. Thorson say that you think we'd be sued? Or, or Mr. Zellifer, if we went over that amount? How does it work that the contract must be written in such a way that you can go over the authorized amount without coming back to the council? I'm, I'm confused on that.
If, if there's some type of contingency that's written in or some type of threshold that if a project is a particular percentage, the, the challenge with this one, it wasn't necessarily changing the scope of work. For example, there was a project that was being worked on, and the, the, whoever it was found underground tanks underneath the concrete. We didn't know those things were there. They didn't know. So that was a project, before they did anything, they had to come back before the council to make sure we approved the additional work to be, being done. Challenge with this one, this is supposedly scope of the project, not changing the overall project. So we just need to take a look internally about what type of latitude do we have with, where we have an increase in percentages, what it was, or rate adjustments. We just need to have a way, I think Mr. Jacobs mentioned earlier, a way for us to be able to bring that back to the council or give some type of latitude so we won't get caught with a sticker shock at the end of the project. But we can work on something. I don't know if that's something we'll be able to get a policy back within the next month or two. But I think staff is going to have to be a little bit more sensitive with those types of changes to communicating that to, to our council members so they won't be caught off guard or receiving those types of phone calls about, about a project that should be good. But, you know, the absorbent cost is a challenge, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, we'll go, Mrs., wait, let me, Mr., did you speak already to Mr. Morrissey?
No.
You didn't, not, not on this one? Okay.
He didn't.
So, so I'll hear, I'll go to the gentleman, then I'll come back to you, to you.
I just want to quickly say, I never supported the canopy or the bridge repair in that way. I thought it was more economical to pretty up the bridge in other ways. But now that the work has been done, I feel that it would be unfair to the contractor to let him sit holding the bag on this. And the reason I didn't support that, for anyone out there that thinks that we're, we have to be for all of these projects, I just didn't think it was wise use of the people's money.
All right, thank you. And then after Mr. Morrissey, I'd like to call a question.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, one, one of the things that I think's lost in this entire conversation is when we get into any particular project or any kind of development agreement, people, I, I mean, let's, let's figure you're gonna build a four-span bridge, and you get involved with it, and you got one span up. And then all of a sudden, you find out that there's a black hole in the middle of the river. And you never saw that before. But it's gonna cost, well, you've already put up one span. So the city has decided to go forward with the project based upon the, the people, the elected officials doing that. I think it, it behooves the entire community at that point in time to get behind that project. I think it, it, it behooves the entire community at that point in time to get behind that project and to see it through, regardless of what we find, regardless of how or what kind of policy you want to set up, whether it's contingency fund or something else. You don't back out of something once you're a third of the way or a half a way through that project.
Mr. Mayor, so I agree. However, in this case, the reason there's a little bit of confusion is apparently, according to the change order, we've already agreed or already have paid out the money, and now we're trying to get council approval. Secondly, now I don't think we have a choice but to vote yes, because as Councilwoman Klein has said, we of course want to keep our word in this case. All I ask for is that going forward, we work together with a better resolution or better contract, I guess, with the kitchen, contingency, or some mechanism that allows us to take care of business, keep our word, take care of our contractors, but also, the other point would be these, we had some bids here that were pretty close. So someone that might have bided this thing accurately should have probably got the job. Someone who bids it cheaper to get the bid and then adds a change order on top, I think I would call that into question, which would be a fair comment, but I don't know why. I think we're now at a point where we don't have a choice.
Mr. Mayor, just in response, I, I agree with part of what you say, Mr. Jacobs, but I want to keep in mind...
After, after your comments, we're closing comments on this, so please don't even ask me after, but please.
I will yield to you, then.
Oh, I was, you had the latitude to do.
That's okay. Go ahead.
But I want to hear what you're saying.
We're going to sit here and wait until you say what you wanted to say.
Just go ahead, proceed. Call the question.
You sure?
Yes.
Positive, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So question has been called, and just to reiterate, shouldn't put council in a situation like this, so I, I hear you. Madam Clerk, for four and five.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No, on four. Yes, on five.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Let's do six, seven, let's do six and seven right now.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion approving change order number three for a net increase of fifty-three thousand, five-hundred-two dollars and thirty-two cents for the fiscal year 2016, street reconstruction program contract number eight-nine-eight, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And number seven, resolution approving completion of project recommendation of acceptance of work for work performed by Aspro Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of six million, four-hundred-fifty-eight thousand, seven-hundred-forty-one dollars, forty-nine cents for the fiscal year 2016, street reconstruction program contract number eight-nine-eight, and receiving filed two-year maintenance bond.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Eric, you got your lay workout in today, but you want to tell us a little bit about, about this project, too? Let's see, fifty-three thousand, even it's, though it's on a six-point-five million-dollar project, but let us know what's happening.
Hi, Eric Thorson, City Engineer. This is, again, final quantity summary for this reconstruction project, was a little fifty-three thousand, five-hundred-two dollars, thirty-two cents more than the original contract amount. There were one-hundred-and-forty bid items on this contract. Out of those one-hundred-and-forty bid items, one-hundred-and-six of them actually had minor changes. You have to remember, it's estimated quantities that are used in the contracts for bid, and everybody bids on that same number. That's how you determine who the low bidder is. The thing that's different is their unit prices, and that's what gives us our low bidder, so... But there were some minor adjustments. It was pretty much all across the board. There really weren't any really large items that changed, but that's what happens when you have a really large construction project. You have a utility conflict where you move an intake, and so then the pipe that connects that intake to the storm sewer, that pipe length changes. So you don't want to pay what you estimated if it's less, or if it's a little bit more in pipe length. You want to be fair to the contractor and pay for what they actually do. So that's why we have all the bid items and prices.
No, we appreciate, this is good education for everybody here to understand, and especially for the public that's watching this as well, so thank you. Council questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I am just questioning, why does this come to us so far after the fact? This is fiscal year 2016. Is there always a year and a half lag?
Eric Thorson, this is a very large construction project, and depending on weather and other conditions, the contractor may or may not get it all done in one construction season. So sometimes they carry over, this one did carry over, some streets carried over to the next year, and so we're just now completing that. Most of the work was really complete by probably mid to late summer. It just takes a while when we're in the construction season, get all the quantities together, get the contractor to agree to them, get all the paperwork done, and get to this actually point where we can accept the project. So it's just a lot of closeout. It's a little easier to do as the construction season winds down, we have more staff time, so...
And this is another situation where six has already been paid out or taken care of before coming to the council?
We still have the retainage to pay. That, by state code, once the council accepts a project, we have to wait thirty days to see if there's any kind of claims that come in against that project. Should there be any claims, then we can settle those with the retainage, but it's very rare that that happens. The contractors are good about paying all their subs and materials and things, so, but we have to do that by state code. So we have to wait thirty days after tonight, and then the contractor would be paid the retainage, which is five percent of the construction cost.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
All right. Could someone take eight, nine, and ten? Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Amos? Number eight, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the Waterloo Community School District and the City of Waterloo, Iowa, to purchase and provide salt, sand mixture for snow and ice control purposes, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number nine is a resolution approving electrical distribution extension agreement between Mid-America, Mid-American Energy and the City of Waterloo, Iowa, for installation of a transformer for the south pump station along Mullen Avenue in conjunction with the U.S. Highway sixty-three project from Jefferson Street to Franklin Street, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number ten is a resolution approving documents and adopt and levy the final schedule of assessments in conjunction with the fiscal year 2018 sidewalk repair assessment program, Zone Seven, contract number nine-three-one.
Check it.
All right. Thank you. That motion has been made with the second. Sandy, number eight could be revenue generating. So that's one where we can generate a little bit of revenue. Any questions about eight, nine, or ten? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
All right. Could someone take number eleven?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time in ordinance establishing grades in the City of Waterloo fiscal year 2018 sidewalk repair assessment program, Zone Seven, contract number nine-three-one.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Eric, you want to tell us what that means for the general public as well? Or you want Noel to do it?
Eric Thorson, City Engineer, this ordinance is required by the state code for us to levy assessments. When you're doing sidewalk repairs, it unfortunately doesn't really make a lot of sense, because you have to put the sidewalk back in and make it match each end of the existing sidewalks, but it is required by ordinance, or I mean, by state code for us to do this in order to levy assessments. And at least over the years, we've figured out ways to try to make this as painless as possible and get the information together as quickly as we can. It used to be, was thought we had to actually go out and survey everything, and it took a lot of time, but we've been able to figure out ways to make it less time-consuming for the staff. But unfortunately, it's just a state code requirement that we have to follow to levy assessments.
All right. Thank you. Council questions? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the second and third times and adopt the said ordinance.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.